All right, good evening. Let me call to order this regular business meeting of the Stevensville City Council. They're here Tuesday, January 8th, 2013, and just say Happy New Year to everybody and welcome you this evening. I want to thank the good Lord for the rain outside and hopefully it will continue through the night until tomorrow. We're going to start this evening's agenda with the Citizens General Discussion, and so at this time I'll open the floor to anyone that would like to come forward and make any comments to the council. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor.
Can we just proceed to the podium over here?
Oh, okay.
And just state your name, please, and your address, please, ma'am?
My name is Diane Netherland. I live at 1481 West Park Street in Stevensville, Texas. And I am here on behalf of a friend of mine who is handicapped and actually cannot be here tonight, although she was planning to be here tonight, because the members of this council and others in this -- authorities in the city have her locked in her house. And she's locked in her house because, besides being given $300 a day fine, the bus that carries her is up in the driveway and keeps her from emerging from her house. There's no way that her wheelchair, which is a full handicapped, all-terrain vehicle, can get out the -- past the vehicles in the -- there. And they have to be there because there's no way that she or her family can afford this $300 fine for putting it on the street, the bus on the street. The bus is required. It's not a luxury. It's required for her to be able to be transported from place to place, around the town, out of the town, anywhere she might need or want to go. And it is not a vehicle that they would choose to have. It's a vehicle that they can afford, and it's a vehicle that will carry her and that will allow her to get in and out of it. I know that the act that provided laws and regulations to keep handicapped people from being discriminated against was passed in 70 -- or actually, it was reinvented in 1975. And before that, it was just a people's law agreement. In 1975, this act specifically said that a handicapped person who can prove their handicap cannot be discriminated against. And that law keeps the people who live next door to me, the business who is run next door to me, but not as a business, as a house, there, because mentally challenged people have the right to live where they want to live. The fact that it's a business has nothing to do with it. They have the right to live where they want to live. The people behind me have the right to live where they want to live. They are also -- that's also a shelter for handicapped people. My friend deserves as much consideration as these handicapped, mentally handicapped people do. She's asking you to repeal the fines and the objection to her leaving her bus sitting on the street so that she can get out of her house, get into the bus, be carried from place to place where she needs to go, as all of you have the right to do. She's only asking for what's fair, and that is fair. If you had only one leg -- also, her husband is handicapped, too. He can't drive. He's a disabled veteran who was injured in World War I and Korean War, and he's a Navy man, and she has to do the driving for him. And now she can't even get her out to the car to take her anyplace. So I'd appreciate it if you would consider this and not make her challenge you anymore with law. Just read the laws yourself and realize that this is -- what you're doing is against the law. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
You said term "bus." What do you mean by "bus"?
Well, it's an old renovated school bus, a very small one that only held six people. And with the space for her all-terrain vehicle and everybody in there, it's about three.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Taylor?
Is it a double driveway or a single driveway in the garage?
They have a double driveway, a small double driveway that goes up to -- not a double driveway that brings her a motorcycle.
Okay.
It's just a small one, and she actually has two buses, which, in order to live like everybody else, her very small bus will get her around down to grocery stores and things like that, that she needs. A larger bus will let her put lucky men of the family when they go on vacation.
So both vehicles are parked in the driveway?
Both vehicles parked in the driveway. And if only the bigger bus parked in the driveway, she can park the small bus, which is not much bigger than what she did now against the curb.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, we appreciate your input, and we'll take the concerns under consideration and get back with you. Okay? All right. Yeah, that's a good point, Alan. I will point out that, because this isn't on the agenda, there's not anything that we can do formally tonight, and certainly I think you would want us to take your comments back and review them before we just made a statement here anyway, so.
Yes, but you need to know that right now she cannot get out of her house. She can't go to the doctor. She can't -- somebody would -- a girlie would have to come in to the front of the house and physically carry her out. She is really literally locked in the house, and that's how a good situation starts. And, you know, that's -- she has a really primitive dysfunction. It's just the city ordinance, and so.
Okay. Well, we'll have to expedite our look into this, obviously.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, any other comments? All right, hearing none, I'll go ahead and move on to item three on the agenda, which is the comprehensive annual financial report. Mr. Coggin?
I'll just call Mr. Pruitt. He's here to make the presentation.
All right.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for giving us the opportunity to perform the audit this year. And I'd like to give a special thanks to Walter Wood and all of the other employees here at the city that helped us during the course of the audit. As you can see from looking at the comprehensive annual financial report, there's close to 90 pages in here. There's a lot of time and effort that goes into completing this document and getting it audited, and doing that and getting it to council in early January was no small feat, and they really did an excellent job of giving us the information that we needed in order to do our jobs. We were, as you know, engaged to perform what's called a single audit for the city for fiscal year 2012. And in a single audit, you really have two separate audits that are combined. The first part of the audit is an audit of your financial statements that are included in your CAFR. And the second part of our audit is a compliance audit of the city's federal grant award programs. You may know that any local government that has over $500,000 of expenditures of federal grants in a given year has to undergo the compliance audit in addition to the financial statement audit. So what I'd like to do tonight is to go over the three independent auditors' reports that we've issued as a result of this audit, and then if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to address those. The financial section of your CAFR is the second section, and it's the first section that's not numbered with Roman numerals. On page one of the financial section, you will find the independent auditor's report on the financial statements. And what this report basically says in plain English is that the financial statements that you have in this report are the responsibility of the city. It's our responsibility as auditors to express an opinion on the financial statements based on our audit. Our opinion is expressed in paragraph three. I'm happy to report we've expressed what's called an unqualified opinion. It's frequently referred to as a clean opinion, and it's the highest form of opinion that we can issue. And what that really means is that the financial statements that you have in this report have been audited by our firm, and in our opinion, they're free of any material misstatements or errors, and they're presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. You'll also note in this report, in the fourth paragraph, that our audit was performed in accordance with government auditing standards. Those standards require your independent auditors to do a number of things, one of which is to report on your internal controls over the financial reporting process. That report is included in your CAFR on page 83. And what this report basically says is that when we're performing a financial statement audit, one of the things that we're required to do is to gain an understanding of your internal controls over this financial reporting process so that we can plan our audit. And if during that time we come across any deficiencies that we consider to be significant deficiencies in internal controls, we are required to report them in this report. And I'm happy to report that the results of our tests disclose no instances that we consider to be significant deficiencies. Again, that's the best that you can hope for with respect to your government auditing standards report. The final report that we've issued is immediately following that report, and it starts on page 85. As I mentioned earlier, there's really two parts to the single audit process. The second part is a compliance audit of your federal grant awards programs. If you look on page, well, 87, you will see a schedule entitled "The Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards." This schedule lists all of the expenditures of federal grant awards programs that the city had during the year. The program that we selected for testing this year was the Airport Development Grant, which is a large program. We tested that grant for up to 14 different compliance requirements that are included in the cost circulars, and I'm happy to report that we had no findings or question costs as a result of our audit. So the results of the audit in a nutshell, you've got a clean opinion on your financial statements, and you've got no findings or question costs with respect to your internal controls or your federal awards program. So it's a very clean audit. That's the results of the audit in a nutshell. If anyone has any questions about the audit or the financial statements, I'd be happy to address those.
Any questions for Mr. Pruitt? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And let me just --
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead. I was just going to just thank you for your work and diligence with this, but also, and more importantly, thank the city staff and Walter for his great work, you know, putting this and the oversight of this program throughout the year. I know you guys did a very thorough scrub of everything, and it's a complicated and detail-oriented audit, and for us to come through without a finding is really a reflection of a lot of great work, and just want to thank you for your review, but the city staff and Walter, you for your great work and attention to detail, keeps us out of trouble, and just keep up the good work. So thank you very much.
Mayor, if with that report, I would move that we accept the report from our audit firm
Okay.
And that we refer that to the finance committee for review.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Sveen, seconded by Mr. Nix, to approve the report as presented and refer to the finance committee. Any discussion?
I think I'd like to just say also, Walt, I've worked in a business that works with federal requirements and state requirements. It's, you know, I go through and I've scrubbed a lot of stuff as well, looking at what we do, and it's amazing the amount of detail that you have to keep up, and I appreciate the hard work you do.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, and we'll thank you for the report.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is to consider a resolution. And Mark, do you want to go walk us through that on the reimbursement?
Yes, this is a little unique, and we have done this on a few occasions during my tenure here. Let me just kind of briefly explain it. During our budget deliberations, we noted that we need to make some sewer improvements that have been identified in what's been identified, what we call our SSO, sanitary sewer overflow studies that we've been working on. We have approximately a million dollars' worth of projects, kind of all the books that we're looking at doing, and we've been looking to, and we've discussed, issuing debt to help us pay for those projects. So you initiated that entire process back during the budget deliberations, and we've kind of got a little timing issue here that I need to kind of sort of just protect our opportunities and rights to be able to do, and that is, we're going to start spending some money on that project prior to us issuing the debt. And we can issue the debt, but it's kind of, we're still a little bit, I guess it really doesn't matter, but we could, but we're just trying to hold off, try to save, not have to pay interest and those other things until we need the money. So we're paying for the improvements we just awarded on Alexander Road, which is a part of this sewer basin that we were talking about, as well as the engineering cost to design the project. In order to use the money that we borrow and are setting aside to -- for this project, because we have not borrowed the money yet, we need to adopt a resolution that allows us to pay ourselves back from our operating funds with these borrowed monies. So in other words, we're going to go out here, spend some money, and when we borrow the money that we've identified, we're going to do a million dollars' worth of projects, we're going to pay ourselves back for some of the costs that we might have expended prior to us borrowing the money. That's what this says, and that's what it does. The engineering cost, there's two cost components that we have already initiated and are starting, but we have not actually told them to get going until we got this paperwork complete. That is, the engineering cost, they've got their contracts together, they're starting some of the preliminary work, but we've asked for and have held them off at completing their final design and construction documents. So that's one cost. The other part of it is, is that the Alexander Road actual construction, the design that's in for the Alexander Road project, there's $200,000, $300,000' worth of sewer improvements that were identified in the SSO in that basin area, and we want to be able to use some of these borrowed monies to help pay for some of that to allow us to get more streetwork done and some of these other, the stormwater drainage projects. So understand that what I'm trying to do is give ourselves the opportunity to pay ourselves back from borrowed monies back into our operating account. That's what this says and does, and I'll be glad to answer any other questions, and hopefully I've explained it as simple as I can.
Okay, questions for Mark?
Mayor, I'd move approval of resolution 2012-01.
Second. Should that be 2013?
Yeah.
You fell victim to the --
So Alan, your very first resolution was incorrect.
Uh-oh.
Your party's messed up.
I'm off to a stellar start.
Who was my second?
Oh.
Okay, all right. It's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. McDaniel, that we adopt resolution 2013-01, expressing official intent to reimburse costs of the city of Stevensville Sewer System Improvement Project. Have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Approval of resolution 2013-01. Let me make one comment on this that I think is really important for us, for the citizens to understand, and for us as the council to remind ourselves. The infrastructure in Stevensville is, there's portions of it that are very old, and I applaud Mark and the staff in this effort. This is really a proactive measure to keep us moving the momentum, and Nick, your work with utilities, to keep momentum without having to wait for the monies to align themselves perfectly. So you're allowing the construction and repair of these critical infrastructure items to keep on pace, and so that's really important. But this is something that we're going to look at in a lot more detail in the coming months of what are the costs related to infrastructure repair and us to stay on top of that. And this is just a very proactive approach for us to continue down that road of taking care of the sewer system that's, you don't see it, but when you need it, it's there. So that's good, and we'll move on now to item five on the agenda, which is to consider approval of a contract with E. Rafferty County for jail services. And before Mark goes over this, I just want to let everybody know that we've had several meetings with the county to discuss the jail contract, and I've been very pleased with an effort to have transparency between the two governments as we've moved forward here so that there was complete dialogue, open dialogue about what are the requirements, what has the, what is the city using, when is the city need the county services? And again, there were some detailed discussions of going through, a lot of reviews of the costs associated with the jail expenses, and that's what led to the resolution. So if, Mark, if you'd just kind of go over some more details on that, I'd appreciate it.
All right, thank you. We've had a standing contract with the county, and the terms of that contract have run concurrent to the election of the sheriff. So it's been a four-year contract, and the contract, because the sheriff was elected, was sworn in January 1 of this year, and created the need first and foremost because of the renewal aspect of it. But the second piece was, is they also have completed an expansion project, and so we were reevaluating those costs and completely, again, really just reviewing it. They were doing their analysis, and so I'm just trying to kind of give you the background here, a couple of other pieces about the history. We've been paying $50 per day for a, for any period of a day, and a day being defined as midnight to midnight versus, or so midnight creates a new day. And then we also had the terms for four years. So with those things in mind, let me just kind of point out, now I want to point out the changes to you from the contract before to now, what you have proposed before you. The last thing that I want to point out before I do that, though, is just so that you can now look at it with hopefully some fresh eyes and follow along with the changes. But we currently have $15,000 budgeted for our, I believe it's $15,000 budgeted for to pay for our jail whenever we take people over there. And it has been running anywhere from $12,000, actual cost per year, anywhere from about $12,000 to $18,000 over the last five to 10 years. And I believe we've been at this $50 under the day that I just defined for about 12 years, or maybe a little longer than that. I want to say 12 years. So with that history in mind now, let me point out to you, we did meet with the county. Renewal was up, and these are the changes, and the only changes that have been made. First, on page two, section five of the contract, there's two changes here. The first amount, the amount has gone from $50 to $100, and it says, "For each prisoner." The second piece of this is, and it says, "A day shall be defined as 24-hour period or any part thereof." And quite honestly, this is probably the biggest change here. Some may say going from 50 to 100 is a big change, but I'm going to tell you this most significant change is really the definition of a day. And any part thereof of 24 hours, let me just kind of, my layman's discussion in presentation has been, let's just say we have an alcohol incident where we pick somebody up at 11:00 and take them to the jail. It's a misdemeanor case, so therefore, if it's a felony case, you need to understand, first of all, if it's a felony case, we don't pay that charge. We don't pay to put them in and book them in on felonies. We pay for the misdemeanor cases. So understand, we may take, I've had somebody ask, what happens if we, you know, made an arrest for somebody that was wanted on murder in Dallas, let's say, and we pick them up? We're not going to pay that charge because that's a felony conviction, or felony case, not conviction, felony case. I'm not an attorney, so if I use the wrong words, please, please, I apologize or just correct me, or Randy will kick me or something, I don't know. So we're only paying on misdemeanor cases. But let's say we pick them up at 11:00, take them down and book them, they get out, and let's say they get out at 7:00 the next morning. We paid for two days because we crossed midnight. So we paid $100 for that particular case, or that particular prisoner going to, okay? Now, that accounts for, that doesn't account for all the cases, but it accounts for a large majority of the cases, I'll tell you that way. There are many, many cases, I want to say it's like 65%, I believe is what they ended up showing us in some kind of report, 60, 65% is what I remember. But they provided the information, we've looked over all of this, and I just want to kind of maybe make you aware of why the 24-hour period now, that same situation that I just mentioned, where we, if they take them in at 11:00, they get out 7:00 in the morning, we're still going to pay $100 because we've agreed that's still within 24 hours. Let's say they don't get out for two days now, two 24-hour periods, so they don't get out for 30, 36 hours, maybe the following day, then we will pay for two days. So, and to me, that is the most significant change, and I want to make you aware of that. The next change that is identified is on page three. Section nine has to do with we, it is no longer a four-year contract, it is a one-year contract with an automatic renewal, and specifically, the part that is of interest to everybody is, is we're going to make a concerted effort each year to sit down and review the contract and just make sure that everybody feels comfortable and that there's not any requested changes on either party's part. But otherwise, it will be automatically renewing, so it's not a, you know, if nothing happens, we're going to status quo. So with that said, let me tell you that the county has been given a copy of this. We've had the original, I don't know if they've met yet on this particular contract, if there are any other changes. I feel certain that it would just be clerical in nature, and with that said, let me just state that I feel comfortable in recommending this and do recommend and ask for your approval to, for this new amended jail contract. One last piece, just so that you know now, I support this. I do need to make you aware that we do anticipate at our mid-year budget that we will need to amend our budget in this area, and I'm going to tell you roughly, I think our budget will go up from about $15,000 a year. I'm going to be recommending a $25,000 budget for this particular item. And again, we don't know how many people get taken to jail, but that will be what kind of the financial impact that, at least, I'm going to try to set aside the contingencies for to address this at this time. With that said... With that said, I'll be glad to answer any other questions and I do request and recommend this jail contract.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Any questions?
I'd like to just thank the county for having worked with us for so long and not having tried to renegotiate in the past. I think that's a great thing, I appreciate your work with them to do that. I don't think that $100 a day is a bad deal. I thank Tommy for, you know, for his cooperation on this. They have a nice new jail out there and I'm going to look forward to this contract.
Any other comments?
This is probably a far-fetched question, but is there any way the city can recover any of these costs from the prisoners that we house out there?
No. The easiest answer is no. I'll just tell you right now. You know, we're supposed to get it through our fines and assets through the court fees, but...
Yeah, we'd probably get some of it back, but it wouldn't impress you.
Don't count on it. It was the best answer, no.
Any other comments? I will add to something that both of you have said and to thank Judge Thompson and Sheriff Bryant for their effort. When Mark and I went over and met with them, I mean, there was a line by line, they had spent a lot of time going through these numbers and I'll tell you, in every case, to our benefit, they rounded down. So it was, I mean, this is an increase, but it could have been more, but they were wanting to be, you know, team players in this effort and realized that we're all in this together. And so I think it was a real, real positive exchange between the two groups. So if there's not any other discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
We accept this contract?
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Kood, seconded by Mr. Nix to accept the agreement for jail services between Eret County and the City of Stevensville. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries, approved for the agreement with jail services between Eret County and the City of Stevensville. All right, the next item on the agenda is item six, to consider appointment of Dennis Jones to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board. So, Mark, you have any comments or Drew on this?
I can tell you that he has served on the board in the past, park board in the past. He was a very good member and when, I guess when he heard we had a vacancy, he said it's a good time in his life to get back involved again, he wants to be back.
Okay. Okay. Entertain a motion?
I move we appoint Dennis Jones to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Ms. Taylor, to appoint Dennis Jones to the Park and Recreation Board. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously to appoint Dennis Jones to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board. And let me just thank Mr. Jones for your willingness to serve once again on this very important board for the city. All right, the next item is to consider approval of a grant application to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. And Mark or Drew want to go over this for us?
Very short, but I'll just summarize what's being mentioned here. And that is now that the Bosque River Trail Project has been completed and closed, we will not have to meet the federal requirements to tie in. There is a grant application available, which we've been aware of, to hopefully be able to extend from the Graham Street Bridge into the city park and tie it into our other system. Again, while it does, I'll just tell you, it's not a large dollar amount, even though $200,000 is a lot of money. It won't get a lot of work done, but if we can get it tied into the rest of our system, that would be very beneficial and something that, you know, we've had a lot of questions, it's kind of why did it die and stop right where it has stopped? So hopefully we'll be successful, but this will be purely to tie in the trail into the city park. And the legal requirements are, we're still working on trying to make sure we maximize our points in the application, but that's the concept of the project. The total dollars are 200,000. Our cost would be another 50,000 on top of that, so understand that we are making, if we are successful, we will be making a 50,000 lot of commitment here if we are, if we are successful. That, I'll be glad to answer any other questions.
Okay, any questions? Okay. Entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the grant application to Texas Parks and Wildlife Department.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Kood to approve submittal of the recreational trails grant to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries to approve the submittal of a grant. One thing I want to mention on this, I should have said it to begin with, but I want to thank Drew Wells for jumping all over this. You know, we had the National Park Service grant that we received and Scott Evans and I were at the last meeting on this and the lady that's helping us from the National Park Service, one of their responsibilities within that grant is to identify other grant opportunities for the city. And this came up in those discussions to say, hey, here's, here's a way to maybe connect the two. And so the city and Drew, you know, immediately got with her and we realized that the timeline and I really appreciate everybody's hard work to meet, meet the deadline and get this in place. So there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts out there and I think the bottom line of this is that we're seeking to take advantage of every opportunity that's out there to help the city and that's, that's really encouraging. And so I want to thank you all for your, your work there. Okay, at this time we'll move on to item eight on the agenda and I'll turn the floor to Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Sivin. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. On December the 11th, our committee met and that's made up of Malcolm Cross and Alan Nix and Brady Pendleton. And I wouldn't say that was probably the longest committee meeting we've ever had in city council, but in my tenure it was. And I appreciate everybody sitting through my, lots of questions, so I'd like to report on that. In your agenda packet, we have on item A, what we did, the first thing we have to do as a city is we're required to review our financial investment and management policies. We did that. We have attached to the agenda item a resolution, Resolution 2013-02, stating that we've reviewed the policies. And part of that, if you'll notice also on the next few pages, pages eight and nine, I guess in your packet here, are a list of policies, broker-dealers list, investment strategies, et cetera, that we will be approving the city to deal with. So if they have any questions, I'll answer questions while I do that or I'll let Mark do it, one or the other.
Okay, any questions?
Then, then I'll, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2013-02 that says that the City of Stevensville, after reviewing the investment policy, brokers, dealers list, investment strategy, the city hereby adopts the revised, updated policy, brokers and dealers list and investment strategies of the city. And therefore, therefore direct the adopted written documentation be part of these minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved, motion made by Mr. Sivin, seconded by Mr. McDaniel. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Resolution 2013-02 is approved, a unanimous decision to accept the resolution approving the investment policy, approving broker-dealers and investment strategies. All right?
All right. Also on your agenda, under item B, we talked about our purchasing procedures and we, the city has procedures that have controls associated with how we spend money. And those controls include how we get bids, submit bids and accept bids from the, from different vendors, both in the city and across the state. And with some of the issues we have, it's been brought to our, to the, to the committee and we approved and are recommending to the council that we modify our policies that allow the employees to accept verbal quotes when accepting bids of between $1,000 and $5,000. I think that there'll be a point at which we'll want to talk about that number as well. And then only require written quotes for purposes between $5,000 and $25,000. It's my understanding that what we require is that we have permission or approval of the council to modify the city's policies to do that. That won't be actually a resolution, but we do have to have council's approval. So I'll make a motion that we allow the city to modify its policies to allow employees to accept verbal quotes when taking bids between $1,000 and $5,000 and then taking written quotes for 5,000 to 25,000.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Sivin, seconded by Mr. Nix to amend the purchasing procedures as noted in the minutes. Any discussion? Any questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries and will amend the purchasing procedures as annotated.
Under item C, Mayor, we also, it's an official statement the city is required to look at and review the statement of our bonds. And we, because of that, just recently it was announced, we've done some refinancing and I can tell you that it's a great thing that we're able to do that and get some lower rates. So we've reviewed our bond financing, discussed our final financial condition of the city and I'm here to tell, I report to the council that we're in good financial condition. And so there's no action needed on that request, I just want to report that as part of our council, our committee meeting.
Any other questions or statements there? I gotta stop and just say one thing here and I, I'm, I know that I'm kind of jumping in here a lot tonight, but I think it's really important to amplify some of these things. I'm holding right here, so everybody can see, the official statement and it's a document that's 40-something pages long and up at the top, it says rating S and P, A+. The citizens of Stevensville need to be very pleased and proud of how the finances are being handled in this city. And you know, Mark, I want to applaud you and your effort. I talked to Walter, you know, earlier tonight, the report that came forward and Doug, your leadership of the finance committee. We don't need to take this for granted. This is, this is every day, taking care of business the way it needs to and I'm really proud of what you all are doing. There are a lot of cities in this country and in this state that can't say this tonight and we can. And so the, you know, the bottom line is that everybody needs to take satisfaction in knowing that your tax dollars are being managed and taken care of in a manner that is reflected not only by an auditor, but by the industry in a manner that is, it's the highest rating possible. So just want to thank you for that effort and hard work and no, this just doesn't happen by accident, so.
Well, actually, Mayor, the bond rating is what allows to have such a good rate on those refinanced bonds, which is, which is a good thing, it saves the citizens of Stevensville quite a bit of money. I'm sure we'll find a way to spend that money. Sounds like Sandler will spend some of it on the jail, but you know, we'll find, I'm sure we have reasons to do that. That was agenda item. Last agenda item was, and I want to thank the two chiefs that are here, Chief Bridges and Chief Chu, because I don't think they really realized when they said, "Do you have any questions for me at the, at our committee meeting?" That I was going to send them so many questions. And they sat there very patiently and answered every question. What we did is we reviewed a five-year capital replacement plan for the City of Stevensville and the two areas particularly on, that I addressed were the, the police department, the fire department. And as you know, we're about to have a retreat or just, you know, I don't know if that's what you call it, I guess, a retreat where we're going to discuss long-term plans and capital expense needs. So I was very helpful to me and I hope to the rest of the committee on what our needs are, so help us make some long-term forecasts because that's, that's the most important thing to me, to see where we're going. If we don't know where we're going, we'll never get there. And I think this will help me do that, so. I appreciate you all's time to do that, so that's my report, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much and Finance Committee for all your hard work and with that. All right, turn the floor over now to Mr. Evans for the Planning and Development Committee report. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning and Development Committee met also on December the 11th. As Chairman Sivin mentioned a while ago, they did some excellent work in their finance committee meeting, however, it did take them all night to do that.
You did postpone yours, didn't you?
Consequently, we were able to do ours in 20 minutes.
It's only because you're bedtime.
It was past our bedtime. Item A on our agenda was the, from the Airport Advisory Board, the committee reviewed the Texas Department of Transportation Aviation Division capital improvement programs for 2011 through 2014. Project estimates for right-of-way acquisition associated with the future runway extension indicate a total project cost of 1.4 million with the city's portion being 140,000. Estimated construction costs for runway extension are $3,417,250 with the city's portion being Our part total represents 10% of the total cost. Our total course will be $481,725. Is there anything we need to do with this, Mark?
Not at this time, it's just...
If there are any questions on agenda item A, I'd be glad to try to answer. Agenda item B was, we discussed thoroughfares. We had a report of, I guess a month or so ago, from David Fowler, who's the new engineer with Tech Dot Local, engineer. We also got a copy of that report from the Texas Department of Transportation outlining projects in Eret County for the next three years. Mr. Kaiser reviewed the progress that has been made in street reconstruction over the last 20 years. The 2013 project will focus on Alexander Road from Long Street to the South Loop and will include stormwater drainage improvements as well as water lines and sewer lines. And I think we've already discussed a lot of that tonight. If there's any questions, I'll be looking to try to answer them. Item C was to discuss railroad crossings. Mr. Kaiser reported that the Fort Worth and Western Railroad may be closing two railroad crossings within the city in the near future due mainly to dangerous conditions of the crossing as identified by the railroad. I believe those two crossings are the one in the Houston Feed Mill area and the other one is Paddock Street, is that right? That's the second, Mark?
We discussed Belknap and McNeil and Paddock is, is on their very concerned list that we discussed, yes.
The two I mentioned plus McNeil Street. Any questions on item C? Item D, we discussed briefly the strategic plan with what little, little time that we had left. Betty and I continue to work on trying to arrange some training for members of the council and PNC and particularly important, we do have a new PNC member, so it'll be good for them. If there's no questions, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Evans. And I want to just applaud you and Betty's effort and encourage you with this, this training initiative. You know, the, the issues are complex that planning and zoning deals with and the opportunity for us to get together and just review the rules are important. It's important because it keeps everybody on the same page, but also helps facilitate decision-making that's in the best interest of the city. So that, that's a, that's a great thing to see that you all are willing to try to tackle as we move forward. All right, the, and for you kind of setting the pace for Mr. Sivin of how you can go through an equal number of agenda items in 20 minutes.
Maybe we should let Nick go first next time.
Yeah, we might, we might consider that, so thanks. All right, next...
Whipper, remember.
All right, next we've got the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Ms. Taylor.
He can have it.
Okay. We're going to give it.
We'll let Joe do this one.
We're going to let Joe, okay, Mr. Kood, put that down, please.
Yeah.
He seconded the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved as presented and we'll move on to comments from Mr. Kaiser.
I'm going to ask the chief to stand up and talk about something that's, that they're initiating, but while he's coming to the, to make the comments, let me just point out, I would like to announce that the first day to file for a council seat will be January 30th. The council seats that are the odd seats, odd places, not odd... The council seats that are the odd seats, odd places, not odd seats, odd places, the odd places, just so that you know which ones you are, are Councilman Koo, Councilman Sivin, Councilman Pendleton, and Councilman Taylor, Council, person, Council lady. So, and then also, I just would like to point out and remind you, hopefully, I believe everybody has done this, but we will be having it all day, we'll be sending out the tentative agenda and complete timeframe, but on January twenty-eighth, we will be having a strategic planning session and all-day think-tank time, so just make sure that you set that aside. With that, I just, the chief's initiating something, I would like for him to report on.
Mayor and council, just real briefly, kind of in response to the school shootings up in Connecticut after that incident occurred, we, along with other agencies in the area, look at our, kind of at our plans and procedures and what have you, without going into a lot of detail of everything that we're going to be doing, one thing that's going to become very public and very visible, that the community will notice beginning this week, is that we'll have our uniform patrol officers walking foot patrols through each of the schools on a daily basis. They'll be unannounced, the officers will show up at different times to eliminate the possibility of anybody determining some kind of a pattern or anything else, and they'll be interacting, school officials and children, et cetera, so, just to let you know, so far, that's been well received by the community in the, just in the brief comments that we've seen on our Facebook page.
Thank you.
Any comments on that? Okay, thank you.
And with that, I have no other comments, and I'll be glad to answer any other questions about any of the projects that are going on.
Any questions for Mr. Kaiser, anybody? Okay.
Well, this time it under comments by council members, I can say that.
Okay, comments by council members. Mr. Koo?
No.
Dr. Cross?
No.
Mr. Sivin?
Yes. I'm challenging the city council members, if you have not seen the chief yet, he is selling tickets to the Cross Timbers Family Services banquet that's being held in January nineteenth, they're just sixty bucks. So, if you've not seen the chief yet, please be sure that you go see him and buy your tickets for him. There you go.
Okay, so that's a challenge levied there, okay?
Yes, sir. Since you were so quick to correct me on that resolution, I'll let you spot my ticket.
I'll fix that for you.
Okay, and I want to say how much I enjoyed my vacation, I appreciate you all taking care of business in my absence, you all seemingly did an outstanding job without me, and Hawaii was beautiful.
Okay. Taylor?
I don't know, I guess some or all of you may have had a chance to go into the Holy Jolly Christmas, but I was just very impressed.
We had a meeting at night.
That's right, well, I was not here, that's right. Well, anyway, I was very impressed with the things that were going on, it was good to see everyone hopping around in downtown Stevenville, that's been one of, something that's close to me, is improving the visibility of our square, and even after that, I noticed, you know, throughout the holidays, it was lit up, and, you know, it still looked very beautiful, and I was very pleased to see the way our downtown looked. And, I had a question, is, what's the, is there a status or an update on the economic development position?
I'm sorting the applications right now and working to schedule interviews, just...
How many applicants do you have? Have you counted them up?
I didn't count them up, sorry. A nice, I mean, a pleasant surprise, a good turnout, a good response, very good response.
Was it double, you had said previously a number, I don't want to misquote you.
I'm going to say that I, you know, twenty to thirty is where I'm at in total, which is a good turnout, as far as I'm concerned, so.
Anything else? All right, Skip?
I'd like to say something, but I'm going to give Sivin a pass tonight, so.
Okay.
I'm just going to let it go. I appreciate that. He's the kind of guy.
All right, well, I'm not going to let this evening go by without congratulating the two thousand and twelve, three A Division One State Champions Stevenville Yellow Jackets, and let's all give them a... It's pretty special to be in a place where you can say that, and that was a community effort, those of you that traveled the games and saw the community turnout there, it's one of the things that makes this community so special, but as I tell people, we call ourselves a city of champions, it's not so much about the football team, it's about the attitude of those of us that call this home, and the place that we live and work, and it's full of a bunch of friendly and hard-working folks, and it's just special for us to be able to celebrate that as a community. Also want to let everyone know that, as you've heard mentioned, the city council is planning on having a, an off-site strategic planning session at the end of this month, and that's going to be a time that we've set aside to dedicate time, the committees have spent the entire fall thinking about, you know, where do programs need to move forward to, we're going to use the comprehensive plan kind of as a launching point from the discussion, but the key purpose of this effort is for us to come together as a group and have a concerted, consolidated, and integrated approach to how the coming year and a multi-year view of how we manage the requirements within the city, and I'm looking forward to that and realize that there are a lot of tough decisions to make, and for everyone to be willing to set aside time to go and do this, and just want to thank you upfront for doing that. And with that, I think we're ready to adjourn. So, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, move to second to adjourn. I hear a bunch of ayes, so, six twenty-six, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.